Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Peralta community. Thank you for joining us tonight on October 11. Let us call the board meeting to order at exactly 6 o'clock. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Withrow, yes, would you like to, oh, yes, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance before we proceed with the rest of the meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For what this stands, one nation, under God.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Adam Board Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Student trustee Hogan?
Yes, here.
Student trustee Latino? Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Are we doing roll call?
Yes.
Here.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Right here.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Here.
Trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. 3.4. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance in community college leadership and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. The full statement of cooperation is attached to the agenda, but in summary, as we do at each and every meeting, we have committed to three things: to build trust and seek to understand each other as board members, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols, and number three, to model the behavior we want others to exhibit. Let's move on to 3.5. Report of action taken in closed session. Vice President Delphine Pope? Is there anything to report out?
I don't believe there's anything to report out from closed session.
Okay, sounds good. Let's go to 3.6. Approval of the agenda. I believe that there are two items that I'd like to move to reorder. In terms of process, trustee Gonzalez Ewan, should we make the motion first to approve the agenda and then should I make that motion during discussion? Or may I make the motion to reorder the agenda now?
I think you make the, you propose an agenda reordering, someone makes a motion to acknowledge that in a second, and then we vote on it then.
Okay. Okay, so let's start with the chancellor first. You have a request, chancellor?
Thank you, President Abella Reese. I'm a little scratchy this evening. So I would like to propose to the board to consider, first of all, moving items 10.4 and 10.5. We do have some guests that are here, and so to respect their time, if we could do that, I would request that. And also, staff is requesting that we pull item 7.1 from consideration. We have some more work to do on that.
Okay, so chancellor, you'd like to move up 10.4 and 10.5 to right after chancellor's reports before informational items?
Yes.
Okay, and then to remove 7.1?
Move approval to incorporate the adjustments into the agenda.
A second thought.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 3.7. Approval of the minutes. May I have a motion? Thank you, trustee Withrow. Second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Roll call.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. 3.8. Associated student government reports. Do we have any student leaders in the virtual room?
We first have Natay Myers. Are you on? Oh, they are not on. Um, I have, see, Mazin Saif?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Hi. Sorry if there's like honking. But for reports. So, let me pull up my notes. So last week, we had our Pachanga event at Berkeley City College at the downtown Berkeley Plaza, where students were able to get tacos. Also, in terms of ASBBCC, we are very close to having a full board. We have two more vacant positions. We are super excited to see the board be fully complete. We, oh, also, as you guys know, a couple of weeks, or a week and a half ago, myself, another student, and a couple of other students from the district, went to DC, and that was a great experience. We got to meet a bunch of the representatives, as well as the Black. And then I met with the administration executive board last week, or early this week, to discuss of our goals and plans for this semester, and that was great. And then lastly, the ASBBCC assigned a delegate for the SSCCC. And are, we are also assigned students, or student representatives for different committees on the district level, as well as on the Berkeley City College level. And we're excited to see our students participate in the different committees and have an opinion on those. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mazin. Do we have Natay Myers in that room yet?
Student trustee Lisa Hogan from Merritt.
Yes, yes. Hi, I am the president of the ASMC, Merritt College. I would like to report that on October the 18th, we will be hosting a civic engagement event from 12:30 PM to 1:30 PM at Merritt College. Also, on 10:20, from 10 AM to 12 noon, we will have a Black Panther event for students to attend and staff. The ASMC would also like to report that we are in agreement, agreeance with President Johnson and on re-changing our mascot. He came to our meeting and he, he gave a presentation on some options for changing our mascot. And as of right now, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, student trustee Hogan. Sasha, is Natay Myers in the room yet?
No, but I have a feeling Simeon Thompson, I'm gonna allow them to talk. I think they're supposed to be representing. One second.
Do we have a student rep for Laney College?
Uh, yeah, sorry for the dilemma. I'm supposed to be representing for Natay Myers meeting.
Hi there.
Hello. My name is Simeon Thompson. I'm the VP of Operations for College Valamita SSCO. So, for what we've been going through, we're still going through T C Tuesday events using the basic needs funds. And we've been doing a lot of activities in them to get free lunches, which will give students a reason to get to campus. But the two main ones that we've done so far are, first off, the one that happened today, the Versatility Resource Fair, which helped gave out a lot of information, as well as produce farmers, as well as give up farmers produce and tie-dye activity for students. But we also have a big one planned for 25th, which will be the Day of the Dead Honoring Ancestors, which will help bring students to the campus as well, provide food for an incest, decorate flowers, and paint pictures for everyone. But aside that, we've sent two representatives, Karen El Torres, as well as President Ty Myers, to the SSCCC conference held on September 30th to October 1st on SF. And they're applying to attend another one on October 21st to 23rd. That will also be the CCC SAA conference as well. Besides that, though, I think we'll mention that we also added two more members. So for SSCO as representative, I'll say that the list is Natay Myers as president, me, Simeon Thompson as VP of Operations, VP of Programs being Karen, Jeremy being the treasurer, and soon the secretary being Sahar Sadat. For senators being Ohiba, Wahiba, DeMarcus, and soon John Howe. And last but not least, we've also added some student, some of our representatives into committees to help bring out modern horizons, as well as get involved in more activities. So we have Senator Torres in Health and Safety Committee, providing feedback on, on like documents and how students, what students are getting from them, or at least what they're hearing easily. And also, myself, Simeon Thompson, on the Student Equity and Achievements Committee, which is just helping looking at, looking into data and seeing wider differences in representatives when it comes to certain topics. So, thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Sasha, do we have a student representative for Laney College?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, student leaders, for your reports. Let's move on to 3.9. Peralta Classified Senate Report.
Good evening, President Reese, Vice President Delphine Pope, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, presidents and guests. Tonight, we have one classified Senate Campus Report. The report comes from the Merritt College Classified Senate. To build morale and acknowledge the commitment and dedication of our classified staff, the Merritt Classified Senate has created a classified professional spotlight in which each quarter, the Merritt Classified Staff nominates their classified colleagues to be acknowledged and featured in the Merritt Classified President's Newsletter. This quarter, three classified professionals were chosen. We would like to take this time to acknowledge and congratulate Lillian Perez, Maria Spencer, and Mary Helen Kaufman for being selected in our classified professional spotlight. In recognition of their outstanding service, commitment, and significant contributions to Merritt College, we thank them for their commitment, diligence, diligence, fortitude, and dedication that upholds Merritt's core values and mission to put students first. The Merritt Classified Senate will be hosting a Classified Taco Tuesday for all Merritt Classified Professionals on November 1st from 12 to 1:30. Moving on to a personal note, as the district heads into the mid-semester flex day next week, we trust and expect that all classifieds will be given an opportunity to engage in professional development activities at the different Peralta work sites. That is the end of the Peralta Classified Senate Reports. Thank you very much for your support of the Senate.
Thank you, Terrence. Move on to 3.10. District Academic Center Report.
Good evening, President Abella Reese, members of the board, Chancellor Jackson, guests. As my colleague just indicated, we're halfway through the semester. And we're in October, and, you know, our late classes have started either this week or they'll start next week. And then COA does dinner session. So I hope we could get good numbers from this fall from our free and giving resources to students. I know it's going to be a long trudge back up to our numbers. Most notably, I've heard a number, how many number of years that it's going to take for us to get back up. But I hope that we can continue to have good numbers, relative good numbers. I want to have to quantify it that way. I would like to see all of us get back to campus at some point in the near future and to specify when that will be. Because we know that other campuses in the Bay 10 have definitely gone back. I think that we should critically look at it and look at what's in our best interest and decide. Part of why we have so many students who are taking online classes is, of course, because we're offering it to the students. And we only have one campus who's probably at about 50% face-to-face, and the other campuses are probably less than 10%. So we really need to make a conscious intentional decision about when, what semester are we going to go back to having campuses that are fully open and vigorous. I think we all are trying to get there, but where we all are currently is questionable about when that is going to happen. And I think that the board and the chancellor should set a time that we're all working towards it. If we assume that CDC and everybody else is saying that the COVID is going to be similar to like other flus, and we know that flus have greatly impacted on certain people, then we should really try to intentionally decide when we're going to go back on camp, on the campuses. Yes, the campuses are open, but when you go from campus to campus, it's, it is definitely different. So I hope we can come up with a clear and long-term plan about when we're going to do that. I don't think it should be abrupt, but I think we should be committed at some point with it. So anyhow, I hope that that occurs. Last week, we had the Governance Committees with their summit meeting, and I think that went well. There were different issues that were brought up. We need to better align our district Governance Committees with those of the colleges. We're all anxious to start next semester where we will be implementing the resource allocation process for the 2324 year as we do our budget development. So I think that's going to be a real game changer in terms of the resources that are allocated to each of the colleges and the expenses from each of the colleges, and then also for the district. So we know how much the district is spending and how much all of the colleges are spending. So I think that that's been a major accomplishment in these past four or five years as we've moved towards this. And that in the future, with this resource allocation, we're not going to get budgets that are, in essence, flipped over every year, the same one from the year before and flipped over. So my hope is really rooted in, in this new resource allocation that we're going to be going through. And hopefully, this upcoming year, the budget development isn't going to be just simply rolling over the budget. As we continue in the fall semester, one of the things that our faculty are very, very concerned with is the estimated cuts, cuts or additions, I should say, to our FTF. The estimate is going to be done based upon last year's numbers. And then it's going to be worked on, on each of the different colleges in terms of what their, what their needs are. And some allocation of FTF is going to happen next semester for the following year. And so my hope is that we really address those issues and we're very transparent in how we go about that and that the administration hears the concerns and the voices of our faculty and students. So anyhow, those things are coming up, and we're looking forward to them. And we have some professional development coming up next week. And I do hope our classified professionals can join us for that day because I think it's important that all of us, whether administration, whether faculty, or whether classified, that we all get the professional development that we all need to better perform at our jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donald. Let's move on to 311. Public Communication.
Anybody that has any comments, public comments they would like to make for the agenda, please raise your hand. I will be moving over. Jennifer Shunovsky? Jennifer, are you, can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry, it takes me a minute. My computer is slow. Good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight. So I just have one quick comment. On tonight's agenda, there is a $30 million building that is for the Automotive Technology Department at College Valamita. And I'm really excited about this new facility. As many of you will recall, PFT worked in support of the bond measure that is paying for this building. But I wonder if any of you have looked at the department that will be housed in this $30 million building and looked at the courses that are currently being offered in those departments? And the way that that department has been impacted by the course cuts that we've been bringing to your attention over the last year or so? By the BI tool that I downloaded data just last month, AutoTechnology had nine sections in fall 2018. That has been cut to almost half, five sections now. Autobody had six sections. It now has one. And those cuts started before the pandemic. Those cuts started much earlier as we chase productivity. And Diesel Mechanic has remained stable with four sections. So as you make decisions about how to use taxpayer money and how to build buildings and how to invest in our community, please don't look at these bond measures and at these facilities separately from the decisions that are being made again and again to cut FTEF, to cut sections, and cut the availability of courses for our students. If you look at only one piece at a time, that's not leadership. That's just foolish waste of money. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Lowell Bennett.
Hi, and thank you for allowing me to speak. And just very quickly to the point that Jennifer made, I actually took AutoTechnology this past summer. And in that class, we had classroom, and then we went into the shop and worked in the shop. And this fall, they did not offer the shop component. So the students that were in the class only had the lecture component. So these are having a very real, real impact on students. And that's what I really want to talk about today is how we're coming to the FTEF allotment. We came up with an allotment last January. And we're sticking to that FTEF allotment or course offering for the fall and through the spring. And what I'm hearing is that in order to meet the demand for the fall, we did increase FTEF and course offerings for the fall, but that that allotment is basically going to be taken from the spring. So basically borrowing spring to pay for fall. And so these things just don't make sense to me. And I think I brought this up at the PBIM Summit. And it's still, it just doesn't make sense how we can set something back in January and then that rules for the next year. Year and a half, really, is what the timeframe, regardless of changes in economic conditions or enrollment or the aggressive strategies to bring students in. It's like we're working hard to bring students in, and then we're not offering the courses that the students need. And so that's the essence of what I wanted to say. And just, we really need to revisit the FTEF allotment to make sure that in the spring, we're not cutting back even further because we borrowed from the spring to pay for fall.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
That is all the public comment we had. That is all the public comment we have for tonight.
Okay, let's move on to three point twelve, then chancellor's reports.
Trying to unmute myself. Thank you very much, President Reese, board members, and to my colleagues and the community. Um tonight, we will have the president's reports as we always do, except tonight. Um I'd like to reverse it. I'd like to have Merritt College go first. And I believe that Dr. Denise Richardson will be making that report on behalf of the president. Uh she's the vice president of instruction. Um then we will follow that by Laney College. Um and again, I believe we have um Dr. Beskah was a little under the weather. And so I believe, and I'm I'm not certain because I can't see everyone in the boardroom, but I believe that that will be done by um the vice president of student services, uh Dr. Marlin Hall, uh which I believe will be the first time the board has met him um since he is coming in on an interim basis, um since we uh made some changes in that position. Will then be followed by uh College of Alameda and Dr. Bajwami. And then the last one would be um co- I think Berkeley City College. And um I'm not sure, but I thought that um Dr. Garcia was at a conference, but she may be back. If not, I believe that Dr. Cooney uh hey, will be making that presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to uh Dr. Richardson.
Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, trustee president Cindy Napoli of Bellarise, Peralta Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, students, and Peralta community. It is my honor to represent Merritt College on behalf of our esteemed president, Dr. David M. Johnson. On Sunday, September twenty-fourth, Merritt College had the honor of hosting the Native American Health Center's Golden Anniversary Powwow. The NAHC was founded in San Francisco's Mission District in nineteen seventy-two and is now located in East Oakland's Mission. It provides comprehensive services to improve the health and well-being of American Indians, Alaska natives, and residents of the surrounding communities with respect to cultural and linguistic differences. Merritt College was honored that the NAHC chose our campus for this solemn yet celebratory event. Many of the members of our diverse community came to support the Powwow and Merritt's intertribal Student Union represented as well. In fact, the three past presidents were in attendance. In the words of our outreach specialist Maria Spencer, who helped bring this experience to Merritt, "The campus came alive and the energy and prayers provided throughout the day were much needed for our community to heal." She reminded us to keep in mind that we were in the company of direct descendants from the relocation era that survived the transitioning from the reservation. She also entreated us to remember that many American Indians were killed and there were concerted efforts to force those who survived into assimilation. So it was a powerful day at Merritt because Native Americans have kept their language, culture, and traditions, and it showed in a magnificent way at the Powwow. On Friday, September thirtieth, the Natural History and Sustainability Program hosted their open house at the refurbished and revitalized Environmental Center. The event began with the NHS Advisory Board Committee meeting, whose stated goals are threefold: to provide insight into program offerings to help expand student knowledge of environmental issues; to prepare students to become more competitive job applicants by offering internships, bringing guest speakers, and arranging onsite study trips; and to help students develop key skills for their specific field of desired employment. We were very honored to have trustee Nikki Gonzalez Uyan in attendance to share his passion and provide his perspectives on environmental sustainability. And since we are giving shout-outs, I want to thank faculty members Ben Nelson and Brad Belucian for their leadership and dedication to the program. I also want to give a plug for the Sustainability Club's upcoming event on Saturday, October twenty-second. That begins at ten AM. Habitat Restoration Day will take place at the back of the campus in the Leonid Canyon. So come out and help plant native species of flora to help revive the environment. And saving the best and most exciting news for last, Merritt College recently learned that we were awarded nearly three million dollars as the recipient of the HSI Title V Grant. Thank you. Conceived as the Aspire Project, our efforts will focus on the recruitment, preparation, and guidance of Latinx and lower-income students. Specifically, funding will be used for the development of bilingual outreach and dual enrollment programs, peer mentoring, tutoring for students enrolled in high-need courses, the improvement of academic retention and success rates, and professional development for faculty and staff and culturally responsive curriculum, pedagogy, and practice. On Friday, October fourteenth, eleven AM, the college will hold an HSI meeting to provide an overview of the goals, timelines, and guidelines of the grant. Then, at noon, in honor of the receiving of the grant and the end of Latinx Heritage Month, the Office of the President will host a celebratory gathering. So please join us up on the hill for some good food and fellowship. This concludes my report for Merritt College.
Well, good evening, everyone. Board of Trustees, our chancellor, our vice chancellors, our fellow colleagues at the table, and our Peralta community. I'm honored to present to you, I'm Dr. Marlin Hall. I'm the interim vice president of student services at Laney College. And here is our report. Laney by the numbers, our enrollment, because the fall is free as a portion of our students, Black, African-American, and Latinx populations have increased by two-point-nine percent, one-point-six percentage points respectively. But those percentages only tell a small portion of the story. In the fall of twenty-two, enrollment numbers have shown a significant increase in student headcount compared to fall of twenty-twenty-one, with nearly thirteen hundred more students enrolling this fall. Enrollment has increased among nearly all ethnic categories. However, we've observed especially notable increases in our Black, African-American population, which is about four-hundred-and-twenty-four new students and Latinx five-hundred student populations. This, this is what this means compared to a year ago. Thirty-three percent more African-American students at Laney, twenty-seven more students identifying as two or more ethnicities, twenty-two percent more Latinx students, nine percent more Asian students, eight percent more Pacific Islander students, fifteen percent more students total at Laney, and ten percent more FTS. In our food distribution areas so far during this fall semester, the college has distributed an average of three-hundred-and-seventy-four meals per day to current enrolled students. Since the effort began in twenty-twenty, the college has distributed the following to its students to address food insecurities: one-hundred-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-two total meals, twenty-six-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-three produce boxes, and eight hun- I'm sorry, eight-thousand-eight-hundred-sixteen take-home pantry boxes. We want to, if you want to hear more about the story of our food distribution efforts, there's a link that that where you can listen to a thirty-minute conversation with our food services director concerning our food distribution. And we also want to say thanks to our partners, the Oakland Rotary, who are on the report pictured below, participating in food distribution efforts. Laney College also supports student-impacted students and prospective students with this on-campus event. Last Wendy, I'm sorry, last Wednesday, Laney College's State Renowned Restoring Our Communities Program, ROCK, as we all know, hosted a clean-slate clinic in the upper equad on campus where our learning communities are located. This event is one of many derived from a partnership with the Alameda County Public Defender's Office. It was attended by roughly thirty people, both students and future students who learned about the college, the ROCK program, and our expungement opportunities. Partnership to date has led to more than two-hundred conviction record changes and the support from Laney College aligns with the tendence of the college's guided pathways framework, specifically the pillars of clarifying student pathways of study, helping them onto the path, and supporting them while they're on that path. The ROCK program, which was established in October of twenty-sixteen, and its goal is to support and equip formerly incarcerated students to to transform reentry barriers, envision, and implement their educational goals, make informed decisions, increase their self-determination, create positive life outcomes for themselves and their families and the broader community. The program would not be where it is if it was not for the dedication and leadership of Roger Chung, Vincent Garrett, and Simone Harper, as well as Brendan Woods of the Public Defender's Office and the County Board of Supervisors. For more information about ROCK, you need to visit our website, Laney College and Restoring Our Communities. Also, Laney College's counseling support students was an October career explor- exploration event, which happened on the days of October eleventh and twelfth and twenty-seventh. And the Laney College Counseling Department will host three career major exploration workshops. The college is particularly proud of its efforts as a result of the statewide program MAPR project, which students access to learn about degree and certificate requirements, possible careers, job, and salary information. But these events will also feature the college's super-strong interest assessment, which the link is on 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 our report affiliated with the Myers-Briggs Company as part of the workshops offered on these days. The sessions will be in room eight-one-zero-five from twelve noon to one PM on the eleventh and the twenty-seventh, with a virtual version of the event being held on the twelfth from four to five PM. Students and prospective students may contact Sarah Bacchus Diaz at her email address, sbacchusdiaz@peralta.edu, or call the counseling in four-six-four-three-three-two-six. No registration is required, and everyone is welcome to show up on the day of the event. And also, our undocumented student resource affair will take place on October twentieth, twenty-twenty-two in the quad from twelve to two PM on Thursday, October twentieth, as part of the October seventeenth through twenty-first statewide Undocumented Student Action Week led by the State Chancellor's Office. This is a key event that will provide legal, health, mental health, and other services for our undocumented students. But more importantly, the event represents a celebration and welcoming of many students who define our community. Additionally, another, I'm sorry, a number of other campus and community resources will be available through the tabling at the event, along with live music, food, and drinks. Information is about these events for our undocumented undocumented students will be found at our website, laney.edu/UCRC. And remember, join us in the quad from twelve noon to two PM on Thursday the twentieth. Also, wanted to share our work addressing student basic needs. Most recently, we through Fall is Free, our affordability, food, and housing access task force at Laney College has submitted a proposal and plans to send a team to the statewide Basic Needs Conference in San Bernardino on Friday, December ninth. Also, as student basic needs and free semesters have become a rallying point for Laney, its campus, its employees, and its students, along with the community, President Besikov joined the statewide affordability, food, and housing access task force to provide system-wide recommendations to address housing, food, and food insecurities faced daily by our students. This task force will review and discuss research literature, participate in discussions with leading scholars, and hear from students regarding their challenges with housing and hunger. Most recently, this task force met on October seventh. And finally, basically Laney is moving forward with Spring is Free. And see, we want to continue to grow our enrollment, increase our FASL completion, which is very important as we want more students involved in higher education. And we want to continue our higher enrollments of Black, African-American students, Latinx students, as well as our Asian-Pacific Islander students, and also increase our FTEs. But as we continue with these initiatives now and in the future, we need support from all, from the college, our trustees, the district, our foundation, also community, for this initiative to continue. And that's the end of my report.
Statewide Affordability Food and Housing Access Task Force to provide system-wide recommendations to address housing. Now you're muted.
Dear President Napolea Bellarise, board members, Chancellor Jackson, students, community members, and colleagues. It was another beautiful fall day at COA today with the diverse ability events collaborating with the Tested Tuesday to provide a host of activities and events to celebrate diversity and accessibility pride. Ableism is another form of social construct which limits the potential of so many of our community members. Several activities throughout the day showcase that we are all diverse in the range of our abilities. And providing an inclusive and empowering environment can unleash our full potential for us and for every community member. Special thanks to Jennifer Sanu. This is our college-to-career coordinator and counselor. Professor Drew Burgess was out there providing um artwork for students. Rachel Goodwin, Dean Emily, and all students and everyone who worked together to make this an empowering community event at COA. Last month, COA celebrated the first Mesa Connect cohort, which was enabled by the grant provided by the National Science Foundation, designed to increase the representation of Latinx students in the STEM fields. Cohort-based enriched learning by culturally-informed course-based undergraduate research experiences in the field of chemistry, biology, computer science, and mathematics are taking place for this new cohort in addition to learning how to be a college student and other counseling courses. Some of our best professors, like Dr. Kalila Bill, Professor Leslie Raymond, Alice Madonick, and Jesse Norman, have been providing these QER programs to our students. Mesa Connect is a collaboration between College of Alameda and CSU East Bay to provide the transition and the transfer to four-year colleges. I'm confident that one day we'll see the members of this cohort and the next cohorts to come in the news, conducting research and adding to the applied research in the STEM fields. As educators, we all know that students learn from each other as much as they learn from us. And research validates that peer mentoring is an effective approach for promoting college stu- student success. And to this end, College of Alameda EOPS Learning Resource Center and ASEC program posted a full-day training for all peer mentors at COA. In addition, last week, an eight-member COA team was among the first ones to hear from Alameda leaders on the economic outlook for the coming year. And these are some challenging times. A discussion of the leading indicators are so essential to our internal and external variables can impact our um community. It is very critical for COA to be an active member in the Alameda community. And as such, we made sure that we had a robust team with trustee Withrow being present, acting vice president of finance, Dr. Jones, Boy Coy, AMT faculty, Donna Jones, a classified professional, and several other members of our administration team. COA continues to celebrate the Latinx Month with an educational journey panel. It was really interesting to see that different panelists have different journeys, but the common theme is despite the challenges, you persevere as a member of Latinx community in the United States. We're going to wrap up the Latinx uh month celebration with a virtual event, which will be a presentation from the Campaign for College Opportunity on the State of Higher Education for Latinx Community. This will be taking place October thirteenth. And with a special screening of Oakland's own first-stop productions, Bacoso Afrobeat of Cuba. This last event is initiated by our ethnic study professor, Jody Campbell. In other fronts, we are continuing to work together with the chairs, academic senate, budget committee, and all shared governance committees to design the third draft of the Spring two thousand twenty-three schedule to ensure that we meet our FTS target. Because despite significant improvement, Because despite significant improvement from fall to fall enrollment, still at eighty-four percent of our funded F T S. Only together we can find a better schedule and better services for students so that they can reach their academic and career dreams. Thank you.
Good evening, President Napoleia Bellaris, Chancellor Jackson, Trustees, and colleagues and in community members. In addition to the written report in your board packet, I'd like to highlight a few items on behalf of President Garcia tonight. First, Berkeley City College received two recognitions as Champions of Higher Education for our success in awarding Associate Degree for Transfer to Students and as as an Equity Champion for increase in the number of A D Ts awarded to Latinx students. We are proud to be given this distinctive distinction for four years and then two years respectively. Please join me in congratulating the faculty, classified professionals, and administrators who work diligently to streamline transfer completion at B C C. Please join me in congratulating E S O L Faculty Member Gabe Weiner for being recognized by the California Acceleration Project for their work and leadership in the successful implementation of A B seven oh five for English language learners. Professor Weiner is among the team of faculty who have led this work and contributed to B C C's statewide recognition as an early adopter and successful implement implement implementer of A B seven oh five. And more importantly, for increasing the completion rates of students who complete college-level English and math in their first year. Last Friday, B C C hosted a La Pachanga in Constitution Plaza in downtown Berkeley. From the music provided by DJ Ome to delicious food from Tacos in Aloha to the Resource Fair booths, the energy was lively and vibrant with B C C and Berkeley High School, School, High School students alike, learning about resources and services. This event is part of the Latinx Heritage Month Celebration, and over three hundred B C C students, Berkeley High School students, and community members participated in this event. Thank you to Trustee Delphine Port for joining us in the celebration and to B C C colleagues who planned the event. In closing, I'd like to thank and congratulate classified professionals, faculty, and administrators for the collective work we are doing to advance student engagement and retention. We are committed to supporting increased enrollment, but more importantly, we are committed to student retention, persistence, and completion. This is evident in the way that student ambassadors are ready to support students online or in person at the welcome desk. It is evident in a way that outreach specialists, Gil Pendleton and Christine Trumbridge, provide warm hands off when students need to connect with admissions and records or financial aid. It is also evident when department chairs and instructional deans work so closely together to ensure that an effective and efficient schedule based on pathways is developed for students. And it is evident in a way, ways in which our colleagues in the custodial and engineering departments take great pride in maintaining excellent, safe, and clean facilities. We want to, we want students to know that we are honored that they have chosen B C C for their academic and career goals. It concludes, this concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you to all the presidents and the acting presidents that are presenting tonight. We really appreciate it to show how dedicated our presidents are. President Rudy Bessikoff just texted me to let me know he is not ill. He is on an accreditation visit, so that's why he wasn't able to make the meeting tonight. One last thing before I turn it back over to President Reese is I wanted to remind everyone that the C C L C Fall Conference is coming up, and that will be November the sixteenth through the nineteenth. And Trustee Bill Withrow, myself, Coach and Athletic Director at Laney College, John Bean, and Justin Wilcox, who is the Head Football Coach at Cal, will have, be holding a session there. It's a facilitated discussion. And it really is looking at coaching, and the title is Coaching, Academic Coaching for Success, a facilitated panel discussion regarding academic counseling and the development of career pipelines for prospective athletes. So if you are attending, please stop by. It'll be Friday at nine forty-five. And I believe that the schedule at a glance is already out there, and if you haven't made your reservations, for those of you that are in the public, please do so. And for board members, just a reminder, just to coordinate with the Board Secretary Sasha Mary. Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you, Chancellor, and thank you, Presidents and Acting Presidents and Vice Presidents and everybody that's here. Anyhow, let us move on to the next two items that have been moved forward, and that's ten point four first and ten point five to accommodate our guests. Ten point four is Consider Approval of Resolution Number twenty-two slash twenty-three hyphen eighty-four, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of the district under its twenty eighteen authorization, measure G, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-five million and approving the forms of and authorizing the execution and delivery of paying an agent agreement, bond purchase agreement, continuing disclosure certificate, and an official statement, and authorizing the execution of necessary documents and certificates relating to said bond. That's quite a title. Dr. Jackson, I will give that to you to introduce our guests and any.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the the board accommodating our guests. I'd like to have our Bond Lial Advisor to make the presentation. Mr. John Palmer, who is here, I see him up on my screen, and John is with ORC. And I believe we have worked very hard on getting this P O S together and would like to present it to the board. And if there are any additional questions, maybe as John goes through the report, then you can ask some questions if they're really pressing. Interrupt, but he might cover them at the end as he's going through that. So if you could hold your questions until that time, I think it would just expedite us getting through the session. So, John, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, Chancellor. So in terms of the documents that you have before you, you have resolutions that do a couple of things. One is that they just approve the issuance of the bonds, and that gives us the authority to take the bonds out to market and sell them. You also provide some delegation parameters so we can, that we can't exceed. And the last thing that the resolutions do are they approve the ancillary documents as to form. So the ancillary documents are the Ping Agent Agreement, the Bond Purchase Agreement, the Continuing Disclosure Agreement, and the S C O Agreement for the refunding as well as the preliminary official statement. And I'm happy to walk through each of those quickly. And if anybody has sort of more specific questions, we can dive into them. But the Ping Agent Agreement contains the terms for the bonds. So what amounts the bonds are in, what interest rate they will pay, when they're redeemable, the mechanics for getting them paid, and eventually how we can pay them off or refund them. The Bond Purchase Agreement is our agreement with our underwriting, underwriters that set forth the terms on which we will sell the bonds to the underwriters, who will then take them out and resell them to investors. The Continuing Disclosure Agreement is basically our agreement to let the market know when certain things happen, as well as to provide annual reports that contain financial information about the district, like our audits and budget. And lastly, the S C O Agreement for the refunding simply provides for us to take refunding bond proceeds and deposit them until such times the prior bonds can be called. So I will pause there. That's a high-level overview of those documents. But if anyone has any specific questions about those documents, I'll answer them now before I turn to the preliminary official statement.
John, maybe I'll ask my question now because it does deal with the interest rate. And I guess, given, given the climate that we're in and given the high interest rates that are, that we are immersed in at this particular historical moment, how, what steps will the finance team be taking to ensure that the district gets the best rates?
So that is largely the reason why we hire underwriters is because it's their responsibility to go out and to market the bonds and to generate enough interest in the bonds that it drives the price down. But in terms of the staff and your other consultants, I think that first of all, what the Chancellor and her team have done is they have brought the district into excellent financial shape, and that definitely heightens interest in the bonds. And by driving interest, will drive our interest rates down. And then the rest of your team has prepared the documents and presented the district's information to the rating agencies in the light most favorable to the district. And that will also hopefully drive interest rates down. But it's worth saying that those efforts, while material, are largely on the margins, and we are subject to the interest rate climate that that prevails in the market generally. And so, you know, what we're talking about is your team can move the interest rates that the district pays by, you know, some basis points, which are hundredths of a percent. But largely, you know, the interest rate is set by the credit analysis that the rating agencies do and the overall interest rate environment.
And this may be, again, a very naive question, but not that you are a suzayer and will be able to tell the future, but this is probably, this could be a better time than waiting later on for interest rates to change, because we don't know, right?
Right. I mean, from a policy perspective, it's very hard to create effective policy by trying to predict what interest rates are going to be. I mean, I think that the, you know, investment banks put their smartest people in charge of doing that, and even they aren't very good. So I think that from the district's perspective, the timing on going out for money is driven by need, and we've worked closely with your finance and, you know, general services departments to figure out how much cash we have left. And from that work, now is the time that we need to go out and secure our next tranche of funding.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions at this point, or shall we have John move forward? Royal, I don't, I can't see if there are any hands up. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So the preliminary official statement is required by federal securities law. And it's required to contain all of the information that would be material to a prospective investor when deciding to invest in the bonds. And it's largely divided up into two, two large sections and some appendices. The front section really describes the credit, which is the tax base in the district. And so we look at what makes up the tax base in terms of a combination of residential, commercial, industrial properties, what the average home value is, what it has been historically. And and your, your team largely drafts that, that section. And then the second section is the section that hopefully the board has reviewed, which is, we call Appendix A. And that goes through the district's finance and operations. And we talked about the district's finances historically. We talked about the district's budget, labor agreements, state funding for community colleges, constitutional provisions that accepts, that that affects state funding. And then we have appendices that include the district's most recent audit, a copy of our Bond Council opinion of the Continuing Disclosure Agreement that you're approving as to form tonight. And just as a bit of background, we have worked closely with the, the district's senior staff, including the Chancellor. We've gone through several drafts to make sure that both your outside consultants and your inside team are aligned on all of the information and that we've disclosed everything that we need to disclose. And so at this point, I can say with a high degree of confidence that we've kicked the tires, that we've had several sets of eyes, both internal and external on the document, and that we're down to the short strokes, as it were, dotting the i's, crossing the t's. But I think that this process has been very productive, and we've gotten a lot of great engagement from senior staff. And would like to thank them for their help in putting this together. And I'm happy to answer, answer any specific questions about preliminary official statement at this time.
Just to both you and.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. And, you know, over the last couple of years, numerous training sessions with board members. I, you know, I'll just freely confess, this is not my strong point. I'm really reliant on other people who, you know, are more expertise. And in particular, because we are a layboard, we're almost completely dependent on staff recommendations on this. We can do our due diligence, and many of us do do our due diligence as much as we can, but at the end of the day, these are recommendations coming to us from the experts. And where that puts us is in a really challenging position because we have to trust our administrative team. We have to trust our finance team. We don't really have a whole lot of choice here. Unless, you know, they're saying stuff that's just completely doofus. But normally, it's not like that. Normally, it's just, all right, this is our best guess at this. And so, thank you for making yourself trustworthy as an administrative team. Dr. Jackson, thank you so much for making yourselves trustworthy. We are putting our faith in you, and in the past, we've done that and been led astray. We're doing our best not to do that, and I want the public to understand how difficult this is because the answers are not obvious. These are technical questions. And so we do best we can, but, you know, it's a little bit of a crapshoot as, as Mr. Palmer has said, you know, we don't have a crystal ball here. So I'd like to in particular thank President Reese for really leading the board in, in the finance team kind of questions over the past four years. She's asked hard, sharp questions, gotten some answers that were sometimes less than satisfactory, and I think in the present moment, very satisfactory answers. So anyway, I cross my fingers, I'll vote yes, but a lot of it's just faith. Thanks.
And Trustee Gonzalez, when I'd like to thank you for sitting through several trainings and also for reaching out so that we could talk about the P O S. I appreciate you doing your due diligence and, and your questions.
So I would just want to thank, first of all, John and his team, in particular Lauren Herrera, who I won't even tell you how many iterations of the P O S that we did to, to the point of changing commas and, you know, adding transitional language. And she was always there up until, you know, the eleventh hour, almost making, making just minor changes to this document. So to ORC, John and Lauren, thank you so much. And also to Erica Curles Wardley, who I'm not sure is on, who is our legal counsel that kind of led us through this process. And I, I can say, Trustee Ewan, I think it's more than finger crossed. We did, we did a lot of due diligence on this. We went over it. We had meetings every week. We went over it. We had meetings every week. And we're talking about meetings of 24 to 28 people with 11 different agencies. So this was, this was not a, a small endeavor. It took a lot of people, including staff, who put in yeoman's work on, on moving this forward from all fronts. So that was led by Roy Roberts, along with Erica and guiding us to this point. And I feel comfortable, I feel confident and I feel that the time is right for us to do this, given where we are with our projects. And I believe that we may just be above the curve because I don't think interest rates are going to be going down anytime soon. And now is the time for us to go forward before the Federal Reserve meets again. Because based upon the indicators that I got when I was back in Washington, they probably will raise rates again. So we will be before that happens, which bodes well for us. So I, I heartily endorse the board approving this measure as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Palmer. Was that your voice that I just heard?
No, ma'am.
Okay. But I put forth a motion. May I have a motion trustees for 10.4 that is?
Move approval.
Okay, thank you, trustee Whitrow, second. Trustees, may I have a second, please?
I will second motion. I'm sad that it's me having to do that. We've got a whole board here. I'd love to see my colleagues step up and own this decision. So I'm going to hold my second and wait for a moment, please.
Okay.
Well, the students can't sec second, can we?
Actually, you can.
You student trustee Hogan, but no. But thank you.
Actually, I believe students in our district can make in second motions.
I thought we could, but I, I didn't know, but if we can't.
Can we, is Natasha?
Can we ask general counsel? I believe this is our board policy. It's student trustees now may make in second motions.
Is Natasha on?
Yeah, just so Royal Roberts is, is general counsel, but I am on and I have reviewed this issue in the past. So just to help, the current board policy does permit seconds by student trustees. And I'll, I'll double, I'll double check to see if there was any change in that policy since its last revision.
Just to ensure that because this is a, this is our bond.
Yeah. And, and, and yet I, trustees, I would recommend on this one, if you could please go forward with one of the elected trustees making the motion in the second, then we wouldn't have any issue on like, on such a, such a critical financial matter.
Right.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins.
And could we have any discussion, any more discussion from our trustees? Seeing none, Royal? Thank you, Chief of Staff Roberts. Then let us vote. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And 10.5. And then I will give this to you, Dr. Jackson. It is just as long in content, but it is not exactly the same.
Yes, I again will defer to John and/or to present this, this item. So.
Thank, thank you, Chancellor. So this item is substantially similar to the previous item, except that instead of issuing bonds for construction projects, we're issuing bonds to save taxpayers' money. So here we're going to take out bonds that we issued in 2012 in order to generate taxpayer savings. The documents, the resolution, the paying agent agreement, the continuing disclosure agreement, the bond purchase agreement, the escrow agreement, as well as the preliminary official statement are all substantially similar to the prior item. And so again, I'm happy to take any questions that the trustees may have about them. If there are any.
Trustees, any questions? Chief of Staff Roberts, could you let me know if there's anybody raising their hand? Okay, John, I don't believe we have any questions from our trustees.
Okay.
We're moving approval. Trustee Whitrow would like to put forth a motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you, trustee Jenkins. Discussion. Seeing none, hearing none. Let us take roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Was that a yes? I'm sorry, President. You didn't officially say yes or no.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and thank you. And the reason I was not thinking about that was because I apologize, Legal Counsel Royal Roberts. I keep calling you chief of staff when you are no longer. You are now our counsel. My apologies for that. Okay, motion is passed. Let us move on to the next item. Mr. Palmer, thank you for being here and for presenting and answering our questions and going through the trainings. And thank you all for allowing us to bring 10.4 and 10.5 to the front of the agenda. All righty. Thank you.
And I'd like to say thank you, student trustee Hogan. We, we appreciate, we appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
And to follow on that, student trustee Hogan, feel free to second at any moment, at any time.
Sorry, sorry, President.
I seen in the chat that I can't, but it says.
Thank you, trustee Hogan. You're right. Board BP 2015 says you can enter the discussion, but not make your second motions. I will confirm the accuracy of that policy. My recollection is a little different of the board's last action on this. And you aren't actually supposed to revisit this item every year in May. And, and we did not revisit it in 2021 or, or 2020, yeah, 2021. So it will be agendized for the board again, but we, we will clarify the policy for you all as well. Sorry for the confusion on that.
Point of information.
Thank you.
Yes, trustee Gonzalez, you in?
So, thank you, Council Sani. I believe it was when, and Linda, you might remember this, when Corey Hollis was student trustee, the board explicitly changed this policy. And so I believe that the published policy on the board website is incorrect. And if that's true, I, it gives me great cause for concern. Because I know at least one other board policy has gone missing from that. And that's the board policy on environmental sustainability has simply disappeared from the website. So I'm quite concerned and I will look forward to Chancellor appropriate research and remediation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to 4.1, review administrative procedure, AP 4100. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, this was a item that came to our attention in the spring. I believe a student spoke to this issue. It was put in place years ago requiring the completion of a computer course. I think right now we have moved past that time where we need to require students are pretty, pretty competent. And so it went through the process. It was recommended by CIPD. It's gone through the shared governance process, was endorsed by the PGC. And therefore it's now coming forward for the board's review. It's an informational item, but I still wanted to make the board aware of it. That we closed the loop on that. Unfortunately, it wasn't in time to help that student. But that is, we went through the, the proper protocol and the proper process.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. And this is purely an informational item, so it will come back for a sec. Actually, it's an AP, so it does not come back to the board. Am I correct in that reading?
That's correct.
Yeah, it's an informational item for the board. It's, it's already gone through the process, so.
Good. Let us move on to our second informational item, no action. Consider review of the quarterly swap portfolio summary report relating to the district's OPEB bonds.
And. Yes, we have Bascom here. And I see Vincent McCarty, who is there, that will be making a presentation to the board on this. So Vincent, if you'd like to move forward, thank you.
Yes, Chancellor. This is basically a continued update. I think most of the trustees and staff will remember that we've made periodic updates in regards to the outstanding swaps that's consistent with the FICMA report, as well as the suggestion of good practices from the rating agencies as well. And this is in relation to the OPEB bonds. And as you may recall, a portion of those bonds are in a variable rate mode or will start a variable rate mode in the future. And so the swaps are related to those variable rate bonds and have an interest rate on those swaps between 4.935 and 5.27. And those swaps are based off of LIBOR, which is the London Inter offer bank rate. And what you should be aware of, and we'll be coming back to you in a future meeting, is that LIBOR is being phased out or transitioned out. And the date for that transition must occur prior to June of 2023. And so we will need to accept an alternative index prior to that point in time. And so we'll be coming back to the board in, in the next couple of months to again, present the options for putting that in, in place. Good news from this report is that on that second page, we added in a historical table. And so if you look just over the last two years, you'll see that the mark to market value has declined from 60 million to 22 million. And that's totally as a result of the increase in interest rates. It doesn't mean that there's an obligation that the district needs to step up and pay or anything at this point in time. But if you were to terminate the swap, that would be the amount that you would owe at this point in time. And there's no obligation on the part of the district to do that. And there's more detail on that last page, but I'll stop there and see if you have any questions for me.
Vincent, can you just, because I, I remember that this is a question that we talked about in board agenda review. Can you just in layman's language, explain the below table values are negative to the district and positive to the counterparty?
Yes, indeed. Those, those values are, it's basically a contract. And so at any given point in time, you determine what's called a mark to market value. And so these values in the right column under totals, those would be negative to the district and positive to Morgan Stanley. So if you were going to terminate these swaps today, then what would be required to, for termination would be a payment on the part of the district of this $22 million. But again, there's no set requirement to do that. And what the district has been doing is to basically what's called amortize each individual swap based off of these sub periods that are listed here.
But as you said, it's actually gotten better for the district between June of 20 and June of 22.
Yes, and that's totally a function of, we moved from a historically low interest rate environment. And during that time, the, the negative value to this, to, to the district went higher. And now that you see interest rates going up, then that negative value to the district is going down. So more in favor of the district.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Whitrow, you have a question?
It's my understanding from the documentation that you submitted in, in the briefings and whatever, that the LIBOR is going away. Is that correct?
That is correct. And that's a regulatory requirement. There had been some.
That was my understanding as well. But given the fact that the, the LIBOR was inherent in the contractual arrangement with the swaps, does that open the door for us to get out of here?
Unfortunately, no, in that you, you, there's basically will be what they call certain protocols put in place. You can negotiate what that alternative rate will, will be or index what will be. But it's pretty much going to be pro forma in terms of just adopting a new index. And you'll have some documentation that would involve Morgan Stanley. And, and you know, you just talked with John Palmer, Pat OREC, they would be involved in that documentation process as well.
So all of that was in the footnotes in the small print of the original agreement?
There is some information in there, but even if, if there was not, this is a regulatory requirement, so there's not a choice by the district. And I want to also say that the district is not alone in this. This is an industry wide transition that's required.
Okay, thank you. It's not the answer I wanted, but thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions of Vincent? Again, this is an informational item. It was requested by our FICMA report that we provide this, so we're in compliance with that.
Being none, but I just wanted to thank Vincent and his team for spending a lot of time educating the board, keeping us apprised, getting these memos in, in public session so that we are all on the same page in terms of our payment plan, our restructuring and all of the facts associated with our OPEB bonds.
Let's welcome.
Thank you, Vincent.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation and I will turn it back over to you, President Napoleon Bellarys.
Thank you, Chancellor. Let's move on to the consent calendar. May I have a motion for the consent?
Motion to approve all consent items, number 5.1.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Whitrow. May I have a second for the motion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I apologize, you should have done this earlier, but I'd like some discussion briefly on item 7.3. And if we can have that discussion under the consent agenda, I'm fine to do that. Or if you prefer, I could make a motion to remove that from consent. I think it's fairly fast. So we could leave it in consent if you would permit some quick discussion.
I would agree to an amendment.
Okay, so let's.
So any trustee can pull an item from consent to action. It doesn't require a motion. And then the discussion would be conducted under the action item.
Okay, and it needs to be handled at the very.
What number is being pulled?
7.3. It's the College Valamita Construction. It's a $30 million building.
So back to my question to both of our legal counsel, does it matter that it's pulled at this point or should we?
No, it would just come in order, in any order you'd like, under the action items. And you can have, a, a question can be asked then.
Okay. So then let me just formally request item 7.3 be removed from consent, moved to action with the.
Okay, and you are okay.
Consent of the body.
Okay, and I think that's, that's fine as a friendly amendment. Can I have a roll call?
And I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a roll call now?
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we have approved all of our consent items and now we are at action. And at this point, let us entertain a discussion on 7. And at this point, let us entertain a discussion on 7.3.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez UN and Withrow. Discussion.
Thank, thank you. So this is just very brief questions to the Chancellor and the general services staff. This is a $30 million building. Congratulations to the staff and moving us to the place where we've got a contractor now and a bid, et cetera. And I just want to confirm that the specifications for this building call for a level of LEED silver certification that is environmentally certified at the LEED silver level, which is per board policy. But I'm not seeing reference to that in the in the documents, and maybe it's just so ingrained like, duh, of course, we're going to do that now. That's built in, and so it need not happen. But because there was this mistake where that policy was somehow deleted from the website, I just need to ask that question. Is this, in fact, spec for LEED silver or better?
We, I will say this, and you can correct me, AVC Smith, with all of our projects, including the current project over at Berkeley City College. And I wish I could be as articulate about it as Kitchell was. We always strive for that, but there are costs associated with trying to move from gold to silver. And so this project is part of funding that we receive Economic Development Act from Senator Feinstein's office. So the costs are, part of that is included in that. And so there is always the goal, but there isn't something that says we're going to do that and mandates that we do that. So, and if you want to expand even more a theory, please do so. But I was not aware that the board had mandated that we were going to achieve a certain status, given the cost associated with trying to do that. So if I'm mistaken, and I, again, there's nothing out there currently. I'm not sure when the sustainability policy dropped off. But because the numbering of that policy is completely different than what we have now. I believe it was Board Policy 3.05 or something like that. And we don't, that numbering is not the same. And I think that probably was when that particular policy was dropped or just didn't get renumbered because we're following the state guidelines or CCLC recommended guidelines for numbering. But again, we're, we're looking to try to address that. Trustee Ewing, I think you have identified a couple of faculty members that are willing to work with us on that and to bring this back forward as a board policy. But currently, it does not, it's not out there stating that we have to do that. So in a theory, if you want to speak any more to that in terms of guidelines, please do so.
Sure, all of our projects, we all request, and it is our goal, to reach minimum silver, minimum silver in all our projects. And it's just as Dr. Jackson, the Chancellor, was stating. We strive for gold, but it is our, our, our goal to reach at least a minimum on all of our projects. And this particular one, I'll have to go back and just certainly verify. But in our documents, when we bid it, it's always to reach. And when we design all of our projects, it's always to reach LEED silver.
So if, if I could follow up, the fact that the board policy doesn't exist on the website doesn't mean that the board policy is not in full force. This was Board Policy 2.4. It was adopted initially in 1980, but then revised in 2007. So it's been board policy for a long time. And I'm going to just read the provision in mind because it's not permissive. It says, "The district is committed to utilizing LEED, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, or equivalent certification criteria in all of its renovation over 10,000 square feet and all new building construction. All new building projects shall qualify for at least LEED NC silver certification and strive, and shall strive for higher levels." This is not, this isn't a permissive thing. This is a requirement that the district has adopted. This is not an administrative procedure. This is a board policy that should be in complete full force.
I think.
So I want to just insist that that got fixed right away. The fact that it's disappeared from the website is irrelevant. It's still the law of the land.
Trustee Ewing, what we just said was that that is what goes out in all of our RFPs. So your statement is not indifferent to what we just presented to you with the AVC Smith.
Well, what I hear is that we go out and we request. And that's not saying, no, a minimum spec for the bid is LEED silver. When we design, when we bring in our architects and designers, they design for LEED silver at a minimum. And if they don't design for LEED silver, then they're not in compliance with board policy. So I don't want to hold this up because I don't want to hold the building up. But I do want to insist that we uphold board policy. That's the one thing that we get to do is insist on board policy. So I'm going to cast a vote, but I'm going to request respectfully that my colleagues revisit this item. And I'm sure, look, I'm not trying to give the general services staff grief here. Okay, you work really hard. I get that. But this isn't optional, I believe. So, thank you. I'm ready for a vote. I think my point has been made. And I'm sure you'll work hard to make this right.
And, and if I may ask, Chancellor Jackson, might you be able to come back to us? Because as trustee Gonzalez UN said, he's not interested in holding it up, but he's interested in ensuring that we insist on the policy. And so might you and AVC Smith come back to us at a sooner-than-later future time to follow up on where we are in terms of the materials that are going to be used and whether that policy will be followed? Because again, it's not a whether it will be or can be, but it's a, it is a policy.
I would like to do that at the time that we also bring to the board the policy for adoption. So the sooner we can get our team together with the assistance of trustee Ewing, and we can bring that back to the board for approval, then we will do so. If we can do it prior to that time, we would also do that. But I would like to bring the board and actually have it as a formal document within the statement. And I know that Dr. Valinsky has already figured out a number for that particular one that falls in line with what we are using now. So we are moving on it. And we will bring it back to the board for approval as a board policy with a new number after we run it through the process like we always do. And I will also have IVC Smith look into this to make sure that the provision was in the original RFP. And we will bring that information back to the board also.
Could you put your microphone on? Legal counsel Roberts?
I was just going to say you have VC Smith in the queue, and then trustee Gonzalez UN.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Interim by Chancellor Smith, and then afterwards, trustee Gonzalez UN, please.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Ewing, I've worked in the district for quite a long time. And I know how passionate you are about sustainability. And we all realized when 2.4 disappeared, we were all alarmed. So we are working to update that policy. But understand, because I've worked in the district for, for this time, I do understand that, yes, we always work to get at least a silver minimum. And if we can, we will go past silver and try to reach gold or platinum. But I do understand that, yes.
Trustee Gonzalez UN?
I, I'm hearing the language that the Chancellor is using about voting on this policy. I fully support updating the policy, and it should go through a process of updating. But we don't need to vote on this policy. This policy is in full force in this board. It has never been rescinded. The fact that it doesn't have a current number doesn't change the fact that we have a board policy that we adopted and never revoked.
Trustee Ewing, respectfully, whenever we make any changes to any board policy, the board votes on that.
Absolutely, and I'm just saying that currently, that policy is in full force, regardless of whether it has an appropriate number.
Trustee Ewing, as I stated, we have that in the RFP. We are not in disagreement on that.
Thank you. I'm just a little bit bent tonight because this is the second board policy that's not appearing on our website that I am certain is board policy.
I can only speak from April 16, 2021. So I don't think it disappeared in that short period of time, but we will make sure that it is included. And that's all I can do is to go through the process and get it back implemented into the policy with a new number. And the board is required to vote on that as it is with any policy. And we can provide the board with the RFP to assure them, or assure you that it is in the RFP for a minimum of silver.
I don't need to hold this up anymore. Thank you very much.
Okay, let us take a vote on this. And a board clerk?
We are voting to approve the item, correct?
We.
Yes.
Or bring it back?
And yes.
No, the motion is to approve this item and move it forward.
Okay, thank you. Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez UN?
Yes.
Trustee Delton Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Let's move on to 10.1, Consider readoption of Resolution Number 21/22-51 for District Brown Act-covered legislative bodies to continue conducting meetings via teleconference for California Government Code Section 54953 or Assembly Bill 361. Thank you. Trustee Handy, was that a motion to move?
Yes, it was.
And then trustee Withrow, second? Discussion and/or Dr. Jackson, if you had comments on this?
I did have some comments on it, and I think that the board also heard from, even though we cannot comment on a public comment, but it was a report that was made by the academic senate, District Academic Senate, Dr. Donald Moore. And they're asking for guidance on when the board, I know we're asking approval for this, and it gives us the flexibility that if the board could consider a date certain of when we will be coming back in full force, it's something that the Academic Senate, as well as the Classified Senate, has been asking. And even with the approval, if this so is approved, it still gives us flexibility, even if the decision is made to come back in full force. And I would ask that our legal counsel, Natasha Sahi, would provide some additional information on it as she and I had discussed also what is happening. And I did do, just before I turn it over to Natasha, kind of informal survey that I did provide to the board in my board correspondence, indicating that many of the colleges within the state have already moved in that direction. And I think that's what has been asked for by our own constituency groups. So with that, I'll turn it over to Natasha.
Thank you, Chancellor, and good evening, trustees. On this item, there, we received a couple of questions about the district's ability to continue to hold virtual or hybrid-style meetings and be in person. And so just wanted to confirm that, yes, even if you have the resolution adopted, as the Chancellor just said, you absolutely have the ability to meet in person. So any of the legislative bodies that are covered by this resolution, which include all Brown Act compliant bodies within the district, they can make a decision to have an all-in-person meeting if they so chose to do so. Also important to note that there were some legislative bills that were working their way through the process this year that would have codified some elements of the, of the way that the practices developed around Brown Act meetings under AB 361. And that, the primary bill that was doing that has become a two-year bill, so it was not yet signed by the governor. And I believe it will be reconsidered again in the next legislative session. There was one change made to the Brown Act around ability to participate through teleconference. But it does not provide the level of flexibility that was being anticipated in the other bill. And so it has some very strict provisions around illness, a maximum number of meetings that a trustee or appointee or a member of a legislative body could use to participate in a hybrid format if needed. And then I think just on a practical note to, to share with you some of what I'm seeing in my other districts around the practice of the resolution and districts moving to come and be able to have more in-person meetings. Because the impacts of COVID are impacting different communities differently. We, I recently, one of the other boards that I served, they recently had a situation where the board president and another trustee did have COVID. And while they felt well enough to participate, they, it, there were some time-sensitive matters. So it would have been convenient had they had, you know, the resolution adopted that would have allowed their participation in the meeting to continue in that moment while members of the public and everyone else could have continued the meeting in person. And so I am generally encouraging districts to continue to adopt the resolution as we continue to deal with the impacts of COVID-19. But knowing that it doesn't in any way limit you from making your meetings as in-person as you would like them to be and is works for your constituencies and the level of public participation and transparency that you're seeking.
Natasha, can I ask you a question, just to clarify what you just said? So you said that the two-year bill had not yet been signed by the governor, but then you had also said that there was one change that was a stricter change that dealt with illness, maximum number of meetings in a hybrid format. So is that change part of the bill that had not yet been signed? Or is that change part of something that is?
It was a separate bill that what, that has been signed.
Oh, so that, and that is starting 2023?
January 1st.
Okay, January 1st, 2023. And do we need to, well, of, of course, we need to actually know the specifications of that particular bill if that's something that's happening in January.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. That, that is going to be individual-specific, not, not for your whole. It doesn't have an impact on your entire meeting. So it, while it'll be included in your annual Brown Act update, and, and it will, and we, we, we'll disseminate that for all Brown Act compliant meetings in the district, or bodies within the district. The, the Brown Act, even outside of the current, the, the new legislative amendment, as well as outside of this resolution, does permit individuals to participate. And that, when I say individuals in this context, I'm speaking only about those for whom you are counting as part of your quorum, right? So not members of the public, not members of the diocese even that are administrators or other participants. So the people who make up the body, whatever that body may be, those individuals can currently participate under the existing rules of the Brown Act online or through teleconference. But there are the, the rules that we. But there are the the rules that we have always had, or at least have had for a long time around needing to agendize their location at the time that the agenda is published. The location from which they participate must be open to the public, and we must post the agenda in that location. Those are the primary elements of that requirement. So that language also does exist. If a if any of our, any of our Brown Act bodies needed to use that, that language in the Brown Act also does 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 currently exist, and it has for a long time. Sorry, Vice President Delphine Polk.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing, Natasha, thank you for that, Natasha. So what I'm hearing is that this only applies to the trustees and administrators. It doesn't apply to the public. Is that a separate policy that we would have to adopt if we wanted public back, public comment back in the boardroom?
No, you so all.
All right, am I making it work? I didn't mean to make it more confusing.
No, no, that's okay. If 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 it wasn't clear for you, then there are others for whom I I didn't say it as clearly as I should have. The the Brown Act requirements around physical presence and physical participation and when we can do that through what we call teleconference under the existing language of the statute. They are, we're only talking about elected trustees and those members that are the formal members of a Brown Act body, right? So for the purpose of the board meetings, we're, I'm always talking only about the trustees, right? Because you could, before COVID, after COVID, at any point in time, you could always allow for Zoom participation or other teleconference method of participation for an expert, for a visitor, for an administrator, for a member of the public. Like those things were permissible before, but the rules of the Brown Act around location of meeting and location of participation of meeting, the fact that we had to have a majority of the trustees participating from within the jurisdiction of the district's boundaries, those rules that have been relaxed under AB three sixty-one. That flexibility is specific to AB three sixty-one. And again, it primarily impacts the elected trustees or the members of the Brown Act Committee Party that make up your quorum. I hope I made that more clear.
Yes. So I guess my question is for the chancellor, if we wanted to, at some point, along with this, bring members of the public back into the boardroom, that would be a separate policy, right?
Right, President Delphine Polk, the chancellor just lost power and she's trying to get back on. So if we can.
I'm happy to put a pin in it. I'm just, this is out of just pure curiosity, since I know I am aware the other jurisdictions are coming back in person.
That's that's a very important question. So if there are any other questions until she gets back on, I don't know how long it's going to take, or we can always go back to either that question or this vote. I'm looking over at the counsel Royal, just to see if there's any, anything that's happened between the moment he told me and now. Not yet. Okay. Maybe then, shall we come back to vote on this so that you can ask that question? And if there are any other questions out there from the trustees, which of course I cannot see, please let me know.
I don't see any other hands up, Cindy. That was the only question I had personally.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we just come, can we, again, in terms of protocol, can we pause this? And then entertain the next agenda item until the chancellor comes back, or?
I think so, but I I will say, I just know from conversations with the chancellor that whatever the guidance she receives from the board with regards to turning, uh, coming back, that's what we'll proceed with. So that's what she's
Okay.
Jen in previous conversations.
Okay, so then this vote would be on adopting this, but that conversation would be the conversation that the board would have as a, depending on how the board goes, as a directive to the chancellor in terms of your question and the public coming back.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you you can adopt the, you can adopt the resolution, which does provide the district the maximum flexibility, and that's for your board meetings as well as your other meetings, your other Brown Act compliant meetings. And you can also make a decision around having public participation in the boardroom again.
Oh, okay, so I'm going to give this to you, Vice President Delphine Polk, in the way you'd like to pose that motion or pose a motion.
Um, I'm happy to just to vote on it as is, and then we can have a discussion about it. I'm just, I think it's worthy of discussion some point in the near future. Very, very near future.
Okay, may I have a second then?
Whitrow already confirmed a second, President.
You have a motion in this?
Yes.
Okay.
We just need a roll call.
All right, roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan? Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Student, uh, trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Tracy Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Legal counsel Roberts just told me that the chancellor is now back. Would you, Vice President Delphine Polk, like to ask that question to the chancellor?
Hi, Chancellor.
I'm back.
Glad you're back. And we were talking about public participation in the boardroom and what the process would be for us moving forward. And it sounds like General Counsel Roberts was saying that it's a board policy that we would have to develop, correct? Because it would, it would be separate from the motion we, from the item that we just voted on with regards to teleconference.
It doesn't have to be a board policy. It can be, and again, I'm I'm not the legal expert. But when we first implemented our policy on COVID, we didn't create a board policy from that. It was from the dais, which it does allow you to do that. And so I believe the recommendation, and again, I wasn't here, so I'm I'm not sure what transpired. I, we just had a little power fluctuation and my computer went dead on me, so sorry about that. What we were discussing and what I was prepared to recommend to the board is that we move forward to a full return to campus in the spring semester. And I'm not sure how that could be accomplished if we had to do a, you know, we put together something, Natasha, I defer to you and to Royal Roberts on that. I don't know how other colleges have done it. I think it just came from the dais and the board said, we will begin on such as such a day, gavel bid in, voted on it, and everybody said, okay. But it depends on how we want to move forward with it. We can take it, we can flush it out, we can take it. We have meetings coming up with our participatory governance bodies, if that's the recommendation. And then come back with a proviso that the board can adopt or modify or change if they so choose. I I think the the question and what I was getting from President Moore was that a decision be made, one way or the other. You know, because right now, some colleges are moving forward, some colleges are not. Some colleges, and I had asked our Dr. Joker, we, I have the information based upon what it is collectively, but I don't have it disaggregated by college in terms of how much at which college is is fully face-to-face and how much is, you know, still online totally and how much is hybrid. So we would be able to bring you that information if you wanted us to at next board meeting coming up. If if that is what the board so chooses.
Yep, and and chancellor, just to clarify, I didn't mean board policy in a formal sense, like board policy administrative procedure. I just said that it would be with the guidance from the board how we move forward.
All right, thank you, thank you all. We were talking about board policies before I got kicked off, so I wasn't sure where we were with that, so. Does that help to clarify the question?
It does.
This president, Paul?
Yes, if we could talk about it at the next meeting and have a little bit more of a comprehensive context and what other districts are doing, that would be much appreciated.
All right, and I will also, we have a meeting coming up, I think on Friday. Hopefully it isn't at the time that we're doing our ACCJC interviews. But it it may not be, because I'm not in every interview. So I I will send out a poll to my colleagues to see, to update what I already provided to you, to see if anything has changed.
Thank you. And then trustee Gonzalez, one has his hand up.
Just point of information, one, I want to acknowledge that V C Smith has noted in the chat that that project is in fact lead silver. Thank you so much for confirming that. That's very helpful. And then I wanted to just point out that, in fact, Board Policy twenty fifteen was amended at our June twelfth, twenty eighteen meeting. So that it now reads, student trustees may enter into discussion of agenda items and otherwise participate in board meetings, including making and seconding motions and casting advisory votes prior to votes being cast by the rest of the board. So that language was amended and should in fact be included. And I've sent the chancellor, I've sent you the link to that.
Yeah, I I I thought that that, and I'll have to get legal clarification on it, but I thought that what it was when we amended it and when it went through the process was just what you just recited, is that students can provide advisory votes. But I didn't think that it said that they could make a motion or that they could second it.
It specifically amended the board policy to strike the language with the exception and inserted including. So the board policy was changed in twenty eighteen and it was changed without any, it was on consent calendar. I've sent you the link. Anyway, just point of information.
I'll 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 look at it, trustee Ewing, and I'll bring it back or either send out clarification or whatever from the, after I look at it and and discuss it with council. Because of that, that was my understanding, was that it was advisory vote, but they couldn't make a motion and they couldn't second it.
I was here. Thank you.
I'm going to stop that conversation because it's on a different agenda item. But thank you for finding that and then let us know in terms of clarification and in in more formally, whether that is the way that we are going, which seems like it is. Let's move on to ten point two, consider approval of a side letter to the collective bargaining agreement between the Protestant Community College District and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local Thirty-nine. I will give this to Okay. Trustee, our second, please.
Second.
Thank you, trustee, Vice President Delphine Polk, and let me give this to Dr. McKinley, if there's anything to give to Dr. McKinley.
Uh, no, this is so that that we bring Local Thirty-nine's agreement in line with SEIU's and the PFT with regard to those is the issues that are that are listed on the agenda. As you may recall, Local Thirty-nine took the lead, and our policy has been, our practice has been to ensure that we keep hold those those bargaining units that are willing to take the lead in the negotiation process. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Discussion trustees? Okay, seeing none, let's vote. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan? Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Let's move on to ten point three, consider adoption of resolution number twenty-two slash twenty-three hyphen eighty-one, declaring the futility of public bidding and approval of change order number three to the Agreement for Services with W E Lyons Construction Company for the Laney College Waterproofing Repairs Phase Three Project, which increases the contract price by one hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and four dollars and two cents. May I have a motion? Thank you, trustee Whitrow, second? Second, please.
I'll second her.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez, you end discussion?
No hands.
No hands, okay. Let's vote. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and that brings us to Board of Trustees, since we've completed ten point four and ten point five. Trustee Whitrow, since you're to my immediate left.
I'll pass.
Okay, trustee, trustee Gonzalez, you end?
Thank you. I'll just report briefly that I was in fact up at Merritt College Environmental Sustainability Centers reopening. And it's an amazing group of people working under kind of challenging circumstances. But that's not unusual for all to, amazing people working under challenging circumstances, doing really noble work. And I was proud to be witness to what they're trying to build and rebuild up there. So congratulations to that whole crew. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez, you end. Let me go to our student trustees, student trustee Hogan?
I think she dropped.
Oh, no, okay. Student trustee, student trustee Latino?
Uh, yes, I have a few things to report. So first off, back in September, at Berkeley City College, we had probably one of our most successful events of the semester thus far, which is our Club Rush. We had around seventeen clubs come in person to meet with students and talk about what kind of clubs we have to offer, what their club is all about, and just gather more members. This is an event that I helped put together with the help of the Campus Life Department. And I would just like to thank all the student organizations who participated, and I'd like to thank everyone who stopped by. Secondly, on October eighth through the tenth, I was able to attend the Haku, also known as the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities Adelante Leadership Institute event. This was their thirty-sixth annual conference held in San Diego. And I would like to thank Christine Trowbridge, who is an outreach program specialist, for reaching out to me and giving me the opportunity to attend. I was able to connect with organizations and other student leaders, and I even saw some of the other student trustees who went to the workshop in August. And overall, it was a great experience, and I'm very grateful that I was able to go. And I'm hoping to use what I learned to further my career path and help other students as well, connect with those organizations. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, student trustee Latino. So great to hear that you had such a wonderful time there and looking forward to many more conferences that you will be attending and reporting back on. Let's move on to trustee Handy.
Um, yes. Two weeks ago, almost two weeks ago, we had the opportunity to take the students to the annual legislative Congressional Black Caucus in Washington, D.C. We did our usual thing. We met on BART, we went across. We had some fits and starts even on that. I think our train ended up dead ending somewhere. But when we arrived in Washington, we dropped our bags and went directly to the Smithsonian Museum, where the students just had an incredible time. They were just totally awed by the whole experience. They were representing Paralta. Thank you, the foundation, for providing us all the T-shirts that match, so we could find each other in the museum. The students were able to meet with our lobbyists, attend a book signing. They had a, we had a reserved seat at Barbara Lee's Constituents Breakfast in in the Rayburn House, and the interns also took us over, so they had a Capitol tour. They, the students had such an incredible experience. They were the best students ever. Thank you, presidents, from Laney and Merritt College and Berkeley City College for supporting us on that. And I really, really want to thank Doris Hankins and Ramona Butler. We just could not have done this without them. People have no idea. We spent two months on the phone every day, every day, trying to make things happen. And even once we got there, you know, sometimes just things happen when you're traveling with a group of twelve people. We also had an amazing student from Cabrillo College join us as well. So the students will be giving a presentation. They put together their pictures and all of that. And I just want you to see it from their eyes, but I just can't thank you all enough, everyone who supported, who offered money, chancellor. That we we had the opportunity to have the chancellor with us, but that woman worked so hard, so hard that we get glimpses of her, but we know that she's in that room working and you, and it's evidence of the reports that you have here. But it was just wonderful to have her with us, and she also got her earful when she got an opportunity to sit down with the students. And the students are, they're already doing the- And um the students are, they're already doing things. Um they're focused on voter registration. Um they're focused on getting people to the polls. They knew how to go and find people and take their pictures with them, and they will just have stellar resumes after this trip, so I just can't even tell you guys how much joy it is for me to see their faces as they navigate their way through Washington. And then one last thing, the students were so united, even though they're all through different colleges. The day that we left was five AM, pickup was at six AM, and it was definitely a bits and start with our drivers arguing and all of that. But we get to the airport and we're going through different ways. And as we're walking to our gate, we noticed that um Lisa wasn't with us. And so we turned and we said, where's Lisa? And all of the students, even the ones that had gone ahead, turned around and came back, and we just sat there at that gate until Lisa came. It was like no one is ever left behind. The love that they showed for each other, even though they've only known each other for, you know, for six days, was just amazing. So anyway, look forward to seeing their presentation. They're going to knock your socks off. Thank you.
Vice President Delphine Pope?
Oh, and one thing, I slept for five days after I got back. That's how intense the trip was, from six AM in the morning till late at night, every day we were running. And I I just, I couldn't believe it. It was just very overwhelming. But anyway, thank you.
Glad you were able to sleep, trustee Handy. All right, let's move on to Vice President Delphine Pope.
Um yeah, I'll keep it brief. Um I was able to um attend Batanga on the Plaza as part of Latina Heritage Month at BCC. It was really, really fun. Um we had a taco truck from uh Takaria Sinaloa, and I was able to have tacos with um some classified staff and some faculty members, um as well as President um Garcia. So it was really great to be in community with folks. Um I see BCCs, again, I see BCC students um and staff and faculty around a lot, so it's it's really great to be back in person. A lot of folks that I've never met in person since I got elected um almost two years ago in the middle of the pandemic. Um and so it's really great to be back in person with folks and to be um out and about. So hoping that I can go to another event very soon.
Thank you, Vice President Delphine Pope. Trustee Jenkins?
Pass.
All right, let us go to our announcements. Vice President Delphine Pope, back to you.
Good. So we have a few announcements tonight. Uh first one is late start classes, including classes starting on October seventeenth are available at all four colleges, and you can enroll at peralta.edu. The Peralta Community College District is proud to continue celebrating Latinx Heritage Month through October fifteenth and beyond. Laney College has events scheduled through November. Tomorrow at noon, zoom in to meet Benhamin Perez, the advisor, with additional events on November eighth and twenty third. Visit Laney website at laney.edu for details. The Bond Measures Oversight Committee will be meeting tomorrow at five thirty PM via Zoom. Visit the Peralta website for details. The Peralta Community College District Study Ab- Study Abroad Program is back. Join us for a study abroad showcase featuring alumni sharing their life-changing experiences on Thursday, October thirteenth at three PM. The Board Finance and Budget Committee will be meeting this Friday, October fourteenth at one PM via Zoom. Register to attend via board docs in order to receive the Zoom details. The meeting will not stream live on YouTube, but will be posted next week to our YouTube channel. Save the date on a November tenth, twenty twenty two for the Peralta Charette, a community forum to inform our five-year strategic plan. The Charette will be Laney College in the theater from nine AM to two PM. Visit the Peralta website, peralta.edu, and scroll down to the events section for more details and to register. And lastly, the last, the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be Tuesday, October twenty fifth.
Thank you.
Calling up.
Did you say that the Charette is from nine to ten AM? Nine to two again, thank you.
Two PM.
PM.
Two AM.
I need to.
Nine AM to two PM.
All right, thank you so much, Vice President Delphine Pope. And with that, let us adjourn, and we'll see you all in two weeks. Have a good night. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.